Number sixteenth meeting, the first thing we usually do is spend a little time in public comment. We like to limit that till about fifteen minutes if possible because obviously the rest of our working agenda is lengthy. So, public comment, yes?
Christine Lino, on behalf of the Women's Athletics Anonymous meeting. We were wondering where in the process the waiver was, if it was being...
I think we talked about that, didn't we at pre-meeting?
We just have to, we have to get locks on the senior center door.
Okay, so we're just getting different lock, I think we should be, we should be...
Getting closer with it, yes.
Okay, what do you think, a meet, a week, a month, or what?
Probably a couple of weeks, because we still have to call...
Couple of weeks, okay, so before the new year for these people so that they can get back in there?
We would love that.
Okay, I would love, I would love to have you love it because there's never some, a lot of things at my meeting that we get to see people say, "We love that."
We love it too.
Okay. Well, you know what, that's a good thing, thank you.
Thank you very much then, well...
Okay, we've got two weeks until, to first of the year, so let's make it an effort for first of the year. Sure we can get that worked out.
Except did the locks...
And what evening do you usually choose?
We meet Sunday mornings from ten to eleven.
So does that mean it's a done deal?
I wouldn't say it's a done deal till you get the lock and you're going click.
Right.
Just saying. But thanks for all showing up, cool.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time.
It really depends on it.
Thank you very much.
Well, you know...
We think that's making more of your time.
Oh, that's okay, and thanks for coming and have a nice holiday season.
Thank you.
You too.
Quick one for you guys.
Welcome to stay for any of the other exciting business. Sure you don't want to stay for the rest?
No, huh? It's exciting.
Moving along, public comment, Stan?
Yes. The reason I'm here, if I called Sandy and I called Tammy about this and I wanted to just bring it to the public, is that there's a television program tonight on Channel Ten, NBC. It's a documentary and it's very focused, and it's called Small Town Secrets. And I did ask whether we could watch it here, but from what I was told, there's no connection to television yet. But maybe there should be with some ARPA money, that wouldn't be very hard to do.
I mean, yeah, I don't know that, you know, our meetings are really intended to watch the news.
No, but it might be very interesting news, anyway, just a thought. So, I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention and all people in television land that it's called, it's Barry Focus, it's a documentary, it's called Small Town Secrets. And I look forward to re, to looking at it whenever I can figure out how to do it.
Well, Sam, I look forward as well.
Good.
Thank you for coming in.
It's always a pleasure coming here.
Well...
It's always entertaining one way or another.
Entertaining, I guess, is the best I can hope for.
That's a good thing, entertaining.
I guess, but thank you so much.
It's better to be effective than entertaining, but we'll get there.
Okay, moving on.
It could be exhilarating too.
It could be.
You know, it could be.
It could be, okay, moving on, we have approval of meeting minutes for requiring action. On December second, twenty twenty four, we have approval of meeting minutes as presented in your packet.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from December second, the open session meetings for public release.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the meeting minutes from December second, twenty twenty four, and that would be for public release, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have presented in your packet and had, you've had time to review, December second, twenty twenty four executive session meeting minutes, which would be approved this evening, but not for release.
I move to approve the December second, two thousand twenty four executive session median minutes for approval and not released at this time.
Second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the meeting minutes for executive session from December second, twenty twenty four, not for release, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Town Administrator Report.
Yep, so I've been finishing up on our special town meeting FinCom booklet, so that has been distributed to FinCom and you all should have received it. And we've been working on the ARPA funding because that has to be closed up by December thirty first. So hopefully we'll have that, we all needs to be, needs to be completed by then. And just want to make two announcements that we'll be closed December twenty fourth, Christmas Eve, and the twenty fifth. And December thirty first will be closing at noon.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Yeah, um, I have this question on the ARPA, um, do we, do we have a number on what's available there?
So, I don't have an exact number yet, so the Wednesday after the special town meeting, because that's kind of our first priority, we'll be finishing up our numbers, Maureen and I are going to meet on Thursday, and we're going to hopefully have that all cleared up, and then probably have one more meeting, but the select board will go ahead and vote on everything just to make sure that everything is, is tight, I did, tight. So, I did talk with someone that we do work with from Capital Strategic, they actually support all, they report all of our stuff to the Treasury, so she's going to need all that too to support every, you know, provide it all to them. So we are covered and everything will be all hundred percent, we don't want to lose any, any funding anywhere, so.
Do you know what day at this point we're expecting to have that last meeting to finalize ARPA?
I do not, we can make a date though.
Well, it's going to have to be very quickly because it, we are not due to have another regularly scheduled meeting in December, so we're going to have to do it...
So, when do you guys want to do it? I would do it like as close as we could to the end, I hate to say that, but...
Well, that would be the December thirtieth.
Maybe the thirtieth, I guess you're just...
December thirtieth would be the, the last...
Just with ARPA funding.
The last hurrah.
Yeah, our last hurrah, just, just so we can go over everything and then you guys, you all take a vote and we have it on file.
To make certain. Yep. Yeah, and it, and it goes through the auditor who's working with us on this?
Goes through our auditor, yes, yep.
Okay, so it should be done by December thirtieth.
Because it's purchase orders that I'm going to have to make up for things that we are putting in the future, and anything that we have contracts, and, you know, we, we have a good handle on it, but I don't want...
Oh, yeah, well, we sure do, I mean, we're nickel and diamond now.
I mean, like I said, Sandy and I worked really hard last week on going through twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four. We just got to get twenty five and make sure that we didn't miss anything.
So you're going to schedule a meeting on December thirtieth to, we do ARPA?
Just ARPA.
Because I, I have to put it on, I'm sure.
Yep, just, just ARPA.
Yep.
Is that a reg, regularly scheduled meeting?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
That would have been our third Monday that we'd, we had, we had a freebie, but not now.
Monday. Yeah.
So it's just the ARPA on that agenda?
And you'd follow up, please, on the Sunday AA meeting stuff that's involved?
Yes, so we're going to have to schedule a time to have those, um, locks go in, um, the digital lock, we'll talk about that after.
Was this just one door, right?
Is it about five?
We'll talk about it after the locks. And then we have to talk about what do you want to, is it going to be twenty five dollars or fifty dollars, what is, so the way of...
Are they looking for us to waive the fee?
Not waive the whole fee because they always, it would be a lower fee.
Oh, a reduced.
A reduced fee.
Okay.
So what would, that would, do you, they used to do twenty five, do you want us to do twenty five, would you, did you want to go to fifty? I haven't had a chance to talk with any of them.
Well, we'll, we'll make sure that we have that information for them when we...
Right.
I think their issue is access.
Right, right.
You know.
And we can't have, we have to have the...
Yeah.
Automatic locks on there, so otherwise you're going to be looking at Japan, one by two, another...
So you're basically talking that we will, we'll be able to open the door from this office for, for, through a computer system, is that what you're saying?
Or with a, um, like a code, or we have to talk with Calvin about that.
Oh.
Calvin, put a keypad.
That's what I was thinking, keypad, I couldn't, my God, I couldn't remember the name, keypad.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
So you have to put a keypad in there, otherwise you're going to look at more expenses with somebody going over for benefits, and I really don't think that our town has the funding right now.
I got it.
And have a real code, and I could see them going in and out.
Okay, perfect, just to make sure that their needs are addressed, okay. Select Board Reports, John?
Um, nothing too crazy, we are, um, working with CMRPC, moving forward with some of the CBD funds. We're talking to them, you know, first step will be the, well, most likely the first step will be the generator for the senior center, and, um, and then, you know, start moving forward with some, you know, getting some actual plans for systems throughout Southbury. So, getting more into the infrastructure part, so, some exciting stuff there.
Yeah, for sure.
Continuing on from the work that's been done over the last couple of years.
We'll be doing meetings with them in January, and we have to have the grant in by April fourteenth, so.
This is the grant related to community block develop, this is the Community Block Development Grant Funds, so. Before, we were partnered with another town, I want to say Leicester, Leicester. And I think our objective will be to branch out from that and go for our own funding this time, so.
Yes, that's what our plan is.
It'll be a bit more substantial if we get it, and we'll have more say over what's going on. So Leicester's been, been great, and they've, you know, approved anything on our end that we needed them to, but it'd be helpful if we can take care of it ourselves, and now we have more substantial projects to work towards because of the initial part that was done with that study in Southbury. So, exciting infrastructure opportunities there.
Okay.
No, I don't have any, no...
Nothing tonight?
I do have some, but it's not, I'm not ready for it.
You're not ready for it, okay.
No, so, nothing that I would speak about.
Later in the agenda?
I, I would just indicate that Tammy and I are also working on all of the joint contracts that we have between the towns for use of senior center, for ambulance and so forth, and ensuring that we have calculated, you know, the shares properly and that we are getting compensated from the town's perspective appropriately. So I know we need to do that on an annual basis, so we'll be doing that before we begin our work on FY twenty six with the Budget and Finance Committee, certainly that's important for us. I don't believe that, um, that, that, that that will be easy, I think every, every town's in the same spot, that we are, everybody is stretching every dime and expecting to hope for everything is going to be reduced. On Wednesday, December eighteenth, I will be representing the board only because they don't want to and I am. I don't want you to think that I said, "Oh, I'm going to pick this meeting to go to," because Sam is going to say, Maureen's picking at me.
Yes, you do.
What board are you representing?
I'm going, I'm representing the Barry Select Board at the meeting with the, with the Quabbin Regional School District.
Good for you.
Okay.
Good for you, we'd like you on, on our side.
I am on your side.
By the way, you noticed that...
I do, I, the superintendent said, you know, it's going to be sort of in the midst of basketball games and so forth, they said, "Do what you can do."
She did a nice job.
Yeah, I will tell her that, she will be happy to hear that.
And I've already told her that.
Okay, well, it always helps to get a second compliment. Anyway, so I will be there on the eighteenth, I will let you know that, that, that district as well as two hundred and eleven other school districts in the Commonwealth are working on what we call Project Two Eleven. Project Two Eleven is dedicated to those individual school districts who will not receive one cent from the state government on schools this year. And obviously we can't let that stand, so we're working with, as a select board member, I work with the Mass Department of Education as well as other groups associated with educational funding and so forth, as we work to make sure that group of two hundred and eleven school districts do get some funding from the state. We know that there's fair share money left over from this past fiscal year, and we know that there's a lot of hands out looking for that, but it can only go to education and transportation, so we're, we're hopeful we will be successful in getting some funding for schools like Quabbin Regional Schools, every school district that's around us is one of those two eleven.
Is there, I mean, do they normally give you funding every year?
Oh, absolutely.
And why are they not doing it this year?
Well, because we are in part of this Commonwealth of Massachusetts and, and school, school districts, as you know, are, shall I say, the number of students we have in school is declining everywhere, and it's declining more, okay, proportionately in places where there is very little economic development, western part of Massachusetts, central Massachusetts. So fewer kids to the state means we're going to give you less money, we're going to give you so much less money that we're going to give you no more money. So what that means is all of the additional costs of running the school, and I use the very simple analogy, I say, when my daughter left to go to college, her room was empty, I still had to heat it, okay? I still had to pay the same amount of taxes on my home, everybody didn't say, gee, Whitney left, she's at college, you must be paying less for all of your regular expenses. Well, you and I both, we know what's happening with health insurance, teachers take health insurance, it's not the same, okay? Now, maybe they have fewer teachers, but the cost of health insurance has gone up so high. And so those are the costs that the state is supposed to be supporting, they're supposed to be supporting public education, that is part of the Constitution. They owe every child a fair and equitable education. So of course, the only way we got educational reform passed initially was that there was families that sued the state. And they sued the state, and the judge said, "Either you go out in the hall and figure this out, or I will figure it out." So they ran back and we had the big, you know, legislation for providing more revenues for schools. That's kind of expired for schools that continue to have lesser populations, and Quabbin is one of them, every school district, Waukesha is one of them, and that's the largest regional school district in the Commonwealth. So at any rate, we have a lot of people who are very worried, a lot of towns that are very worried, closing schools. And one thing the state does which we find interesting is if you've built a school in the last twenty-five years and you have a twenty-five year bond on it, but you now don't have enough kids to really keep it open, you could consolidate. They say, "We'll do clawback, we're going to take our portion that we paid for that school back." So we say, "No, we'll leave the kids in it," because the towns could not pay back with the, with the, sort of the mortgage is, right? Because obviously the decline in student population is not only, only in Massachusetts, it is across the nation. America's birth rate is very, very, you know, small compared to the old days. So at any rate, we know that we're going to be working with Quabbin, and we are one of the five towns that support that district, and obviously, as from Mass Municipal's perspective, when you go to the conference in January, I've already seen what they're, what they've got there for the things that they want to push forward. School funding is essential because the towns and the city, and the cities can't, can't survive without the state stepping up and helping more with public education.
Is there a reason why they don't want to do this anymore?
It's not that they don't want to, they say, "We've got a lot of money, we've got a lot of places to spend money." And they're supposed to, in the, in the law, it says, "If you regionalize your school district, you get a hundred percent reimbursement for transportation." We haven't seen a hundred percent reimbursement for regional transportation in decades, I don't think ever, to be honest with you, I don't think ever. And that would make a huge difference, they're only giving you eighty percent of millions of dollars that you are spending to bring kids back and forth to school. So those are the areas that we are, you know, pressuring as, as select board members and pressuring obviously as school people, hoping that we can get greater, you know, we, we, the towns cannot do this, they just cannot do it alone, they cannot. As much as we want to, be easy, be easy to do it if we could, but we can't. So that's what we'll, we'll be working on, on Wednesday night, we've been invited to do that, so we continue to do that, good work. Correspondence, anything that we need to spend, I want, I'm going to take the correspondence that we do have from Matrix, and that is that company that we were working on four or five years ago that was supposed to be doing Spring Hill Road. They have not done one thing on Spring Hill Road, they've now sent us a new bill, and I, and, and I think we're going to say, "You haven't done anything." We're probably not going to, we're not going to pay this bill.
That was probably what I wanted to ask about and talk about, but I wasn't sure, and I got some questions on it the other day, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, well... Yeah, because they haven't done anything.
Right.
So we're, we're, we're not going to pay them yet, so if they say we're not going to do the job at all, that will be fine with me.
Okay, good.
Did you have a contract with them?
Well, we have, well, we have this agreement that has been back and forth in the mail that is called now just an extension. So we don't think we really have a contract with them, we do have an attorney that represents us in the, so we say, in the work of getting a new contract with Spectrum slash Charter, or Charter slash Spectrum, however we want to call it. And we have indicated to him that we need his help in, in making sure that this thing is not something that we're going to get stuck with when they haven't done anything. I mean, I mean, Mike, where are they, they haven't even got the polls up that they need.
Well, they put things on the polls and they, they did some preliminary work.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't see any big changes, I mean, I live on that road, you know what I mean, so it's...
I know you do, so they haven't done anything, so I think we're, we're, we're going to exit that agreement with help from our attorney.
If they have a requirement, then we can litigate against them.
I'm sorry?
If they have a requirement, then we can litigate against them, and we could get recovery like Trump did against ABC.
ABC? Such a fantasy, but I love it. Well, our attorney, I'm, I'm hopeful will, will be able to put us in a situation where we are taken care of. I'm going to make them wait as long as they've made us wait, so I've got four more years.
You were earlier talking about schools, and I just happened to...
I was talking about what, sorry?
Schools.
Oh, schools.
Happy to find this on, on Google, and it says, "People also ask, is Barry a nice place to live?" And response says, "Barry is a great town to write, raise a family." It's twenty-five minutes from Worcester to Worcester, and within minutes to the Quabbin Reservoir. The only downside is that, is that real estate taxes keep, keep on going up and up, sometimes over a hundred dollars a year. And then it says, "Cute, quiet, and beautiful town."
Well, I would say, if you can find me the town or the city that says and boasts, "We haven't had a tax increase in decades."
I just happened to find, I wasn't looking for anything like that, I just...
Well, I'm just saying...
I don't suppose this is a good time for me to say that I had a three-bedroom, two-bathroom house in Arizona, and a nice piece of land, but with that, everything, we had everything we've got here, the fire, the police, everything there, and I paid a quarter of the taxes.
Oh, I believe that, yeah, Massachusetts ain't cheap.
I, I was shocked.
Well, Massa, Massachusetts, Massachusetts is an expensive place to live, Connecticut is an expensive place to live. New, New York is an expensive place to live, California is even more expensive place to live, there's no question about that. You can buy a house in central Ohio equal to or better than what you may, might find in Barry as being a great house, and spend an entire, it'll, it'll cost you much less, and your taxes will be much less. And I've lived in Ohio, and I would say, "I'm going to pay Massachusetts taxes." Take, take that for what it's worth, but...
It was a shock.
Huh?
It was a shock.
Yeah, I'm sure it was.
I did...
And you had a son all the time, you lucky person.
I only have a one-bedroom, one-and-a-half bathroom house, not one I'm thinking of.
Well, I was, I was listening to the debate going on this afternoon at, on NPR about Boston, trying to shift some residential tax burden to businesses, and back and forth and back and forth, and, and their taxes this year went up ten point five percent for residential, and I, and the, and the value of their property is, so I'm glad, I'm glad I don't live in Boston, but anyway.
It's crazy.
It is crazy. I wish I could tell you we were going to bring taxes down.
No.
Probably not. Okay, correspondence, so you and I can talk more about Matrix, okay?
Yes, yes.
And I'll hook you up with our attorney, and after he talks with you about an hour, you will say, "Maureen Freeman."
I actually was involved in one of those, probably won't make it to that one.
Yeah, I, I probably don't, I know, I know, I know, okay. Okay, I, now for some good news, and, and Sam, I'm going to ask you to ensure that Mr. Andrews gets this information. Our, our treasurer is here.
Well, so I'm here to see you guys because at long last, after a very long court case, the Massachusetts Land Court has awarded ownership of one thousand West Street to the town of Barry. Now, the only unfortunate piece of this is that the land court took so long that we are now under the paradigm of the new tax title, the revised MGL Chapter sixty. The new chapter now requires you within thirty days of the court making this decision, which was December second, to make a determination on whether the town wishes to retain the land or to sell the land. Right now, our tax title attorney recommends that we pursue sale, mostly because the new law will impose upon us a requirement if we retain it to appraise the value of the land in order to return any excess equity to the prior owners. So we don't, we're in a bit of a situation, as we know, with the town meeting coming tomorrow night, we don't really have the funds, we don't know what an appraisal would cost. Voting now to sell the land would save us that potential cost, we would then have to list it with a broker. That's one of the things Tammy and I will have to do, a Chapter thirty B procurement process, obtain a broker, we list it with a broker for a year. Tax title council is recommending we put it up for sale for what's owed, because that's over two-thirds of the best value the family could put forward as to what the land was worth. We would sell it as is, there is...
Junk.
Some, yes, some, some degrees on the property, so we would sell it as is with the expectation any buyer would be the one to clean up the property versus us. If for some reason it does not sell within a year of its listing, then we can go to the auction like we've done in the past under the old law, at which point we can sell it, and for whatever somebody buys it for, we write off any difference on our books, on the tax title sums, which is good for our books in the long run, and also, in that case, you might find a buyer who'll buy it for value, be more willing to clean it up. We could try to clean up the property ourselves, but then we would be leaning that to the tax lien, that's already seventy-three thousand deep, the family can't pay.
Yeah, right.
So if we're adding another twenty or thirty thousand in cleanup, we'll never see the funds. So the best strategy, at least according to councils, that we pursue selling it, and we see how that goes.
Well, that, this has been a long, long process, through COVID when nothing was happening at the land court, and some very, very frustrated neighbors, and, you know, as much as we tried to say, we're trying, and I really commend you for the work that you've done on this, because I know it's been a long haul trying to get this going.
Good job.
We, we came really close when I started, and then another member of the family came forward, and the court, you know, did the right thing, they gave them due process, but it did make the case last another year, so.
Yeah, okay. Do we, do we do like a vote from us this evening?
Yes, if you could take a vote this evening, that would be helpful, I have to tell tax title counsel.
Okay.
So you're looking for a motion to sell as is?
Yes.
I will make the...
How much is it going to sell for?
Seventy-three thousand, which is about what's owed.
That's a bargain.
The acres there?
Not in Arizona.
I don't know the specific acreage, but I do know the best...
Not in Arizona.
It's a fair, it's a fair size.
The best evaluation the family could provide the land court was eighty thousand. So council feels seventy-three is comfortable because it's more than two-thirds, if it sells for that, that's the new...
How many acres is that property?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I...
I'd say seven, maybe?
I know its best value was eight, was eight thousand.
It's bigger than, it's, it's good to those pieces in there.
It's just property, you don't, you don't have?
There is a foundation still on the property, but there's debris from when the house burned down that were pushed into the foundation, so whoever buys it will need to clean it up.
And there's some junk cars and junk...
Be unknown on cleanup on that, you definitely take the, the good road on that because you don't know what's there, I mean...
No, and it's assessed values in the sixty thousand range, so that seventy-three is pretty comfortable, council says, because the best they could prove was eighty, the assessors say sixty-something, so it's in the delta.
Okay, we have a motion?
I would move to sell the property as is.
I would second that.
So we have a motion made and seconded to sell the property at one thousand West Street due to the final judgment of the court at an amount of seventy-three thousand dollars.
Approximately, yeah.
An as-is with cleanup that would be necessary, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it looks like a vote.
Is that seventy-three thousand what they owed in taxes on it, or?
Yes, seventy-three thousand includes the taxes and some of the legal fees of the town that we're allowed to charge them.
It's been a long time coming, I tell Neil, we didn't give up, we just took too long. I probably could.
I'll send an email tomorrow, Maureen, I'll try to keep it removed.
How you do, good for you, good thing.
You do, that's good.
Good for you.
I tried to, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jake.
Thank you, Jake.
Okay.
Nice job, thank you.
Have a good night, Jake.
Wait, did we actually take the vote?
Yes, did we took the vote, those in favor?
We did, aye.
Yep.
No, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thought we did, okay.
I know I made a motion, I couldn't remember us actually voting on that.
Okay, Constellation New Energy Inc., December what, electricity contract vote? You're just going to give us the end, just after, oh, it's only thirteen percent of the world, not as bad as...
It actually went down, so...
Okay.
This is extension of what we had before.
Yeah, that actually today's date, so that's...
Yeah.
The word's on to what number?
Uh, it's point thirteen forty, a kilowatt hour.
Down thirteen percent.
For, for how long of a term?
So...
I think it's a year.
Thirty-five months.
Thirty-five months.
Or three years.
Beginning January...
I just want you guys to make a motion to vote, you decide.
Because I, I have dealings with them, and I'm just...
Tomorrow morning, because it changes.
Home, and I think I pay fourteen point something, and I have, I have a year, three-year contract.
Well, we're going to get a three-year contract for three, yeah, I think so.
So that's good, good for you guys.
Point one three four.
Okay, so we need a, a vote?
Yeah, I would move to approve, how to phrase this, uh, the Constellation electricity rate, or to enter into agreement with Constellation for a thirty-five month term at point one three four dollars per kilowatt hour.
I would second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to enter into an agreement with Constellation Energy, a start date of January twenty, twenty-five, for a term of thirty-five months at a price of zero point one three four kilo, a kilowatt hour, those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I just want to say one thing, so this does change on a daily basis, so it might not be a hundred percent, one point, or thirteen, point thirteen cents, so a year, okay, with, I have to sign it tomorrow, so...
Well, it's, it's... It's variable.
Okay, so there, yeah, so I want...
It does, it's, there's a restriction on how much it has to be variable.
It does, but it changes every day, so I just don't want to lock it in that, because we might not have this tomorrow, it'll be lower, maybe it'll be higher, but as long as you make, I don't know if you have...
So you're saying, once we, once we sign it, it...
It's locked in.
It's locked in, but this rate could change by tomorrow.
It could change by tomorrow, so...
But whatever rate we have at signing is locked in for three years.
Sign it tonight.
I can't sign it, I have an appointment with her tomorrow, ten AM, so I think maybe you want to change... I can't sign it, I have an appointment with her tomorrow, ten AM, so I think we wanna change it to like a variable rate or whatever.
So. To, to whatever the rate is tomorrow at ten.
Should we, um, have that in the motion, should we amend that?
It'd be flexible? Yes.
So, uh, to, to at the Constellation price that would be, um, effective tomorrow, our date.
Yes.
Okay, you, you wanna take an amendment to that, John, and?
Yep, I, I would accept that amendment.
We have a second on that, to accept the amendment of taking the price point that will be given to us on ten AM tomorrow morning?
Got it.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's, we voted on the amendment, now we all set, we're good, okay? Uh, okay, police office resignation letter and, um, I believe that is a gentleman who's taking in a, a brand new officer who is taking a position in Franklin, so at any rate, I don't know, he must be relocating because that's quite a height.
I know a little bit about that, he, I was told that he's relocating his, um, you know, with, um, relationship, you know, I mean, he's moving east. So, uh, I don't believe there's any particular reason why I believe he, other than that.
Well, ag- again, it's one of those situations where he's a very young officer that we just sent to the academy and so forth
Yes.
and now he's leaving us, so.
Is it going Tyler or Joshua?
Tyler.
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 Tyler's going to Franklin.
We s- accept, accept the resignation of the officer who's, uh, sent us his letter of resignation, who is Tyler Hosley. It's doing, regret to inform us that on Monday, December twenty-third, he will be his official last day of work at the police department, that he's accepted another position in the Franklin Police Department. I want to thank you and the rest of the police department for all that you have done in furthering my career and I will continue to do my best work until my final day. I wish you the best, uh, of, the, the rest of the Barry, um, Police Department, nothing but the best moving forward. So with regret, we accept his resignation, we have a motion?
I move to accept the resignation of Tyler Hosley from the Police Department.
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to, to accept the resignation of Tyler Hosley from the Barry Police Department, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Joshua Pease, Constellation.
Should be right next.
Okay, his, uh, chief said, "Born effective the twenty-fifth, Merry Christmas. Uh, after my scheduled twenty-three zero zero two oh seven hundred hour shift, I am resigning from the Barry Police Department. I've accepted another opportunity in the town of Palmer. I am thankful for the training experience and friendship I have been given working in the town of Barry and the Barry Police Department. Please know that this was not an easy decision, however, I could not turn down the raise. I'm grateful for the time I've spent here and I wish you and the department the best." We have a motion, please?
I move to accept the resignation of Joshua Pease from the Barry Police Department.
Um, we have a motion made and seconded to accept the, um, resignation of Joshua Pease from the Barry Police Department. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so the vote. We have a wage authorization, um, submitted for, okay, you're gonna help me with the name, is it Cooper?
Cooper Sonaban.
Sonaban? Cooper Sonaban, um, the employee firefighter position, uh, Fire Department, the proposed classification is step Fire Department number two, step two. Um, eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents an hour, as an on-call Fire Department person. We need a motion?
I move to approve the wage authorization for Cooper Sonabed, Sonabed, sorry, um, to, um, FD two, step two at eighteen ninety-eight as an on-call firefighter.
As recommended by the Fire Chief.
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to, uh, follow the recommendation of the Fire Chief to place, um, Cooper Sabat- Sonaban as to firefighter on-call FD two, step two, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, another wage authorization here, okay, from Woods Memorial Library, from the supervisor, the library director, Joseph Hood, uh, employee name Timothy, Timothy Ford. Um, okay, we're going from adult and technology services librarian, CL three, bachelor's step one. Uh, her hourly rate, twenty dollars and thirty-seven cents. Um, oh, this is, she's going to the adult technology services librarian, bachelor's step two. Her new rate will be twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents. Uh, hours worked at twenty-nine, step increase at two percent, those in, we need a motion?
I move to approve the wage authorization for Timothy Ford from, uh, from step one to step two to a rate of twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents per hour.
We have a motion made and seconded to, um, approve the, um, uh, so the wage authorization increase of two percent or to twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents an hour submitted by the library director for Timothy Ford, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving along, DPW, Thomas George interim superintendent, uh, Gerard Markowski. Um, this looks like, is this one of these things, a thirty hour driving and snow plowing, right? So this is a little different, we haven't seen these before here, um, so.
He spoke to you about that.
No, he did, no, I meant, we've never done these before, usually the classifications, this stuff was done at the, at the, um, DPW meeting, I think. So at any rate, um, we have a snow plow, plow driver, hey, who worked at a thirty dollars per hour rate, snow plowing. Do we have a total hours, am I missing something?
It's just a wage authorization.
Oh, the, this is, yeah, that's.
It's a wage authorization.
Yes, we've already voted it, yeah, yeah.
Cause this, this is for a contract plowing, correct?
Yeah, and I, I believe we covered all of that.
I think this is using our equipment, though, we, at thirty dollars an hour.
Didn't, didn't he have that in all of his things that we got?
Yeah, we've already approved these, yeah, so, okay.
So we approved that rate for plowing, do we need to approve these individuals?
This is using, using, using our equipment.
Yep.
Okay, we, no need to take action on this.
Oh, you don't?
We don't.
You just said that to me.
It was a list, we had a list.
We already, we already approved a list.
We, we approved a list of rates, I wasn't sure if we needed to approve individuals.
Do I still have to give that wage authorization to Janine? Or is she automatically?
Well, she should, she should have the list that we approved.
Well, I mean, we would have to approve, we would have to, if, if we're, you know, it would have to be a blanket approval of thirty dollars per hour per driver.
Yeah.
I mean, that would, and I thought that was part of, I, I can't remember.
I think it was.
Does he have?
Ten ninety-nine, so is this gonna be like, um?
I, yeah, 'cause this is contract, so this isn't actually a wage, 'cause it's contract.
That's why it's different.
That's what I mean, it's contract, it's.
So I didn't, we didn't need to do this.
That's okay.
That's okay.
Because technically it would be going through.
Yeah, and we approved the rates for plowing contractors already.
And if, and if they're bringing in their own equipment, it's more work.
No real problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll put that discussion in the office.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so we ta- we, we don't need to take any action. Okay, okay, now we have, uh, the common vitrulars license requested by Carter and Stevens Farm LLC and Stone Cow Brewery LLC and the entertainment license also for Stone Cow Brewery LLC.
I move to approve the common vitrulars license for Carter Stevens Farm LLC and Stone Cow Brewery LLC.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the common vitrulars license for Carter and Stevens Farm LLC and Stone Cow Brewery LLC. And the entertainment license?
I move to approve the entertainment license for Stone Cow Brewery LLC.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the entertainment license for Stone Cow Brewery LLC, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then for, this is for Carter Stevens Night. Then we have the, um, alcohol license renewal for Carter Stevens Farm LLC and for Stone Cow Brewery LLC.
I move to approve the alcohol license renewal for Carter Stevens Farm LLC and Stone Cow Brewery LLC.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the alcohol license renewal for Carter Stevens Farm and Carter, uh, and Stone Cow Brewery LLC. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.